Thank you, guys, for joining online. So there's one council member here, three online, so we do have a quorum to get started. And we'll just start with roll call this morning. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Jengula. Bills.
Yes.
Reynolds. Oh, is he online? Okay. Haverfield.
Yeah.
Griffin.
Here.
Five present, one absent. Okay. So, sorry, we don't have a lot of people sitting here, but they're there watching. And I guess we're going to start with utility billing. Is that correct? And Jeff, is that you?
Yes.
No, that's me.
You're going to start. Okay, Alpha, thank you. So, go ahead and hit the microphone up there. And thank you, guys, for a great breakfast. And thank you all for being here this morning. And we all look forward to hearing what you have to say. And appreciate it.
Sit down.
Yeah?
Is it green?
No.
There?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name's Alpha Rodriguez. I work out utility billing. And I wanted to discuss our budget with you guys. Do a presentation. Here is our organizational chart for our department. And then our mission is to provide the highest quality customer service by processing bills efficiently, timely, and above all, accurately. We strive to thoroughly research and answer questions regarding charges and services provided. Now, we were asked to focus on the mayor's five questions. First question is, what is our mission? Which I just covered. Next is, who is our customer? Our customers are primarily our citizens, local businesses. And then we also have internal customers, such as the Water Works Department, wastewater, and other internal departments. What does the customer value? Our customers value accuracy, prompt service, understanding, flexibility, and they value being able to speak with somebody when they call in. They like speaking to a person. What are our results? So far this year, we've built 75,250 accounts. We've processed over 142,000 payments and answered over 21,000 phone calls and entered over 5,000 payment plan arrangements. Is our plan effective? I would say yes, our plan is effective. Our focus on creative and proactive solutions help us to help customers quickly and accurately with the staff that we have. Our accomplishments for this year. We, after experiencing about 2.5% increase consistently for the last five years in FY '25, we hired an additional FTE. We hired a lead. And that has helped us to absorb the additional calls and payments and stuff while still being able to meet our deadlines that we have. We've extended our hours. We've changed shifts so that we are now providing services from 7:30 to 5:30 Monday through Friday, giving us an additional 10 hours to our customers. This has also helped our employees because it gives them a day off, that they are able to do their appointments and run errands. And it just, kind of, it's a win-win. For local improvement districts, we started sending biannual statements to delinquent accounts. And we've been able to reduce our delinquent balance by 83,000, which is about 47%. Now, our goals for next year. Next year, we want to complete the steps needed to move to monthly billing. That would inclu... No, I'm saying yes. Oh. That would include evaluating the cost associated with monthly billing and figuring out ways that we can absorb or offset those costs. And include, that also includes increasing our electronic billing so that that helps reduce some of that cost. We want to maintain a satisfaction rate of at least 3.7. We want to put a kiosk in the lobby area to help when customers come in. If they want to sign up for auto pay or e-billing, we can help them right then and there. We want to develop a progression plan for the staff. I have several staff members asking me, how do I keep growing? How do I move on? And so that's what we want to develop for them. And then we want to increase our calls answered from 92% to 95%. To meet our goals for our budget, we won't need any additional personnel. I feel that we can do, meet our goals with the staff that we currently have. We will have an increase to our bank fees because we anticipate some growth, about 2%. And that will increase our fees. Contractual services, that is what it costs to send out the bills, send out reminders, things like that. That is going to increase. Postage is going to increase. If the USPS rate increases, it's going to be 7.4%, so, for them. So that affects our cost. Sorry, went too fast. Want to make sure Jeff had plenty of time. We also want to do a special promotion to encourage customers to move to electronic billing. And that way, that'll help facilitate us going to monthly billing. And we plan to work with our communications director and see about doing either inserts, posters, what's the best way to get customers to change. And then I'd like to send a couple of staff to a conference for Springbrook so that we can see what can we do to prepare for monthly billing. I'd like to send a customer service staff to see how other cities process our bigger mail, I mean, bigger cities process more mail. Because if we move to monthly billing, we'll get more payments. And then I'd like to send a billing staff member to see what other programs we can offer with the services. Things like level pay or landlord agreements. What can we do once we move to monthly billing? That's all I have. Any questions?
I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you. Thank you for all you guys do. One thing that utility billing, working with water, right? Because it's, they're all in sync together. They are trying to be proactive and think of new ways to do things. When we, the reference to Springbrook. We were going to transition to a different software. And originally, it was to be Tyler. And we decided that was, absolutely wasn't going to work. Springbrook was the system that they were currently on. But they needed to upgrade because of the, it was an old system and it had to be upgraded. That has been a very slow process, and it has not been easy. But it was, it was mandatory. There wasn't an option in it. The goal is to go to monthly billing. But there is a cost to that. But tremendous discussion has gone into this and a lot of thought. And I really appreciate the work and the consideration. And so it'll be nice when that implementation actually gets finalized. And then I appreciate you guys thinking of ways that you can continue to offer services. But the software has been a big piece of that. Because you can only do it with the software. And the software implementation's been extremely slow. But, and it's no fault of theirs at all. It just has to do with the company. So, anyway.
Mayor, it's worth while noting that we deal with both irrigation and water utilities and lids. And I don't think other utilities across the Treasure Valley do that. They deal with probably just water. They don't have irrigation because they live in Meridian. We have HOAs do the water. And the laterals. So this is a bigger responsibility than other cities might have.
Join all of them. Yep. Well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And if nobody, if you please consider switching to electronic billing if you live in the city of Nampa. It's just my little pitch there.
The key is, we've got to remember, I just double paid my irrigation because I forgot I was on our auto pay. So. And I just forgot. People like me. It's like I was so concerned I was late, so I paid it and I realized it was auto pay. No, just leave it till next year, but that may really mess you up, so.
That's true.
Excuse me.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, and then I'm on the opposite and I forget. And mine got turned off twice. So I apologize for the people that came to turn off my water twice last year. Next year, we'll be better with one month billing.
Oh, Councilman Griffin, do you have a question?
Yes, just regarding the actual physical statements. Do we have a round number, or did I miss it, of how many households within the city are still expecting us to mail a physical statement to their homes?
I don't have a round number. Right now, only about 12% of our 37,000-plus customers are electronic billing. So we really need to get that number up.
Is there anything that requires us, either in city code or statute, to make, keep doing that? I understand that having Silver Crest, I speak for my district, Silver Crest 1 and 2, there's a lot of retirees and senior citizens that still might not be up to date with email or, or electronic statement. Is there anything requiring us to do that? Or can we, basically imminent domain, this horrible expense of doing paper delivery and say, you have until August 1st, September 1st, December 1st? I really don't care how far out. The state's requiring a StarCard? Can we require an electronic summary or an electronic delivery by date certain?
Well, we do have some meetings scheduled here internally to discuss options that we have. And that is going to be an option that we'll consider. We just have to take into consideration, like you said, citizens who don't necessarily have access to the computer, which is also why we want to have a kiosk and try to help as much as possible. But it is something that we are taking into consideration and will discuss internally.
And just to add on to that, Alpha's done an absolutely fantastic job managing the processes and keeping costs in control. But one of the things that we're going to meeting with the mayor fairly soon on is, is changing the billing process so we will tell the customers that if they want to continue paper billing, that's fine. There will be a charge for continuing that. But we need to work through the process, identify the charge, make sure the mayor's good with it, and you all good with it. But if we're incurring costs that are going up to mail bills when they can be paid online, we'd like to incentivize people to go online. And that may be one method we're strongly considering.
Mayor, for the record, how does...
I think that's a great.
How does somebody make that transition? Do they go to the website? Where do they go for that? Yes, they would just go to our website, which is nampa.billingdoc.com. And, no, done it. Sorry. And they will log in and they can make the selection there to select paper billing, notifications by text. There's all sorts of different options in there.
Thank you so much. If there are no other questions, we'll let Jeff move to the next.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Pleasure to be here today. Jeff Barnes, Director of Water Resources. I first just want to introduce our staff here today, who represent army out in the field right now, doing a great job. So I'm going to start with water resources. Our superintendent is Andy Zimmerman. We have Dave Gassel here, who's an assistant superintendent. And Izzy Peña, next to him, is an assistant superintendent of our collection system. And you'll see in the presentation just how much those folks oversee in the city. Well, next, we're going to talk about water and irrigation. John Spencer is our engineering manager, managing the, both of those areas, water and irrigation. We have Shane Windler, right there. He is an assistant superintendent, one of the busiest people in the city right now with irrigation startups and managing all the stations. Ira Rhodes, right next to him, I'll put him, one of the busier people also. And then there's Lindsay Dunbar, next to Ira. And she is our business manager for water resources.
Why do we need you, Jeff?
Exactly. Okay. If you didn't hear that, I said, why, why do you need me? Yeah, okay. All right. And then we have a third area. We'll talk about environmental resources. And Shannon Johnson leads that. He's been absolutely instrumental in just saving dollars and efficiency. And you'll see what they oversee. And then Greg Goodman, he supervises our stormwater department and works with developers and things like that. Darris Bruce is new to our staff, but not new to engineering. He's like 20-some years over that. And so he's managing all the capital projects in the city. We appreciate that. I hope I'm looking around. Kelly, Kelly is not part of my team, but I want to thank you. She just helps all of Public Works and amazing on the public outreach. And she's just brought so much professionalism and experience to our staff. And then it's Administrative Professionals Day today. So I just want to represent Rachel Larson, who is amazing, does way more of that. Great leader in our department. And then she helped set up everything. She did this PowerPoint, pretty much, just to let you know. So, and I want to thank the mayor, City Council. Very unique city that we have the support of a council and a mayor that's innovative, drive to change every year. We have a good foundation, but we build on that every year. Every year, we're getting better. And that doesn't, that's just the latitude to be able to do that. And Tom Points, too, and our senior director. That latitude to be innovative and to try new things and to save dollars and to be refining things and making things better is super important to me. And just, it's rare. So, thank you. All right, here we go. So Nampa Water Resources includes domestic water pressure irrigation utilities. The second is water renewal. We call it water renewal now instead of wastewater because we don't waste any more water. We pay a lot of money to recycle water. And our environmental resources, which includes stormwater. And also permitting, we brought all that into house. And then capital, we manage all the utility capital projects now from, from this division. 90 employees, a small army out there right now. $79 million budget, including grants this year, and $5 billion in infrastructure. So what, we prioritize water quality, water reuse, water conservation, and water in customer service. And we're looking at doing this through innovation, through efficiency and stewardship. And we're following the direction of the mayor and City Council. I want to start with water and irrigation utilities. And again, John is the manager of that department. If there's any specific questions, please stop me along the way. And we're covering a lot. There's a lot in your packet. I'm going to skim through most of it, but I'm going to hit the highlights. But definitely for the public and for the mayor and City Council, there's a lot of data in here. We actually started planning as a team in December. We've been working every other week. We meet together as a crew and we just plan out. We figure if we don't plan out now, we're a year and a half behind. If we don't do what we need to do in budget season. So again, the water, just the water and irrigation utilities are about $2 billion in infrastructure. We have $25 million in revenue from enterprise and from rates, our customer rates. And you'll see the value we have to our customers. 33 employees. And then we have 73,000 domestic and irrigation connections. We're the largest combined domestic water and irrigation division in the state. Of course, our mayor's questions, our mission is to provide a safe, provide safe, clean, affordable, and abundant domestic and irrigation water, supply with exceptional customer service. We, we want to ask ourselves, and we've asked ourselves, that our plan effective? And yes, we're absolutely, our plan is effective. But we have vulnerabilities, and we're going to talk about those today. Citywide goal tracking. We are on, on chart to meet our goals. Really, our goals, especially the asset management side of things, are 10- to 15-year goals. Because that's improving our asset management, replacing lines and things like that. And that's going to take more than just this year. But we are on track. We are beginning to do more and more exercising hydrants, valves, which is, keeps our system working and extends the life of our most important elements within the system. Accomplishments, we're going to go through a lot of accomplishments. We've had a really good year. And I hope the public and everybody can see just how much this crew does with a pretty lean staff. 115 wells and pump stations, 1,200 miles of water pipe. That's almost, from here to the Mexican border. If you want to think about, they have to maintain every foot, every inch of that pipe. It's a, it's a lot. 26,000 valves, 6,300 fire hydrants. And I noticed that, that fire hydrant count just keeps going up because we're growing so much. We are installing a new tank. If you drove by today, it's looking rather finished. And we're getting to the final steps of painting the tank. And it's 9.2 million, 1.5 million gallon tank. And we're on time and on budget with that. And that provides capacity for growth, for fire flow, for storage, for pressure regulations, all sorts of things. And we've been working on that for several years. Accomplishments, this is the business management side of water, and that's Lindsay Dunbar. She's done a fantastic job. This is just 2,800. And UB, they answer a lot of calls, too. So I want to thank you for Alpha and that team and finance, Leslie. 2,800 customer service response, 2,800 citizen site visits per month, 1,300 water samples taken. We get into hydrants flushed and, and backflow assemblies and certifications. There's a ton of work going on out there. So very impressive what they get done. Excellent customer service ranking. So we, we were part of, John did, took a survey. It's more of being a part of a benchmarking survey with the American Water Works Association, how we're doing and what we can learn and glean from other utilities around the country. And what we found was that we are offering very, very good customer service, especially for the size of staff that we have. So this national group of 100 utilities, some big, some our size. The average time on an unplanned disruption is 5.1 hours to get it taken care of. Ours is 3.9, and we track that very closely. On unplanned disruptions, we have 3.8 hour turnaround, and the national average is 4.2. So you see, we have a lean staff. They're working hard and they're getting out there all hours of the night. And they're fixing line breaks efficiently and quickly. 25% faster than, than this 100, group of 100 other utilities. I also want to address, there's 167 breaks in the city. This is when it's getting back to our vulnerabilities. That's a lot of breaks. They're spending a lot of their time on this emergency response. Accomplishments, we have a new water building coming. And I want to thank Councilman Haverfield has helped us along the way. I feel like we, we made some changes in this process that saved costs. We still have an excellent building that's functional, but it looks good. I think it adds to the value of the city, and it definitely will support our staff doing a good job. So this, it's just, the bid is just opening in the next, in this next few weeks. So we are on our way to constructing it out in the next year. Accomplishments, so we served 8.98 billion gallons of irrigation water in '24. That's 75,000 gallons per person. That's like three residential swimming pools each person uses in irrigation. I'm thinking we probably can save some, some irrigation water. So, and we are working on that. On the domestic side, we served 3.3 billion gallons of water over the year. And that's 28,000 per person. You'll see where we're going and trending on our water usage. But that's 28,000. That's just about a little bit over a swimming pool of domestic water per person. You think, that's what we serve. That's what this group has to provide to the citizens. So citizens are using less water. This is very interesting. So since 2015, we've been tracking use. And we were tracking overall use, and that overall use is going up because our population's going up, obviously. But if you look at the individual per capita use of each individual, that's going down. So there's a 22% reduction in what a single person uses per year compared to 2015 on the irrigation side. And then on the domestic side, it's 9% down. So, and overall, we were seeing an increase in both of those because we've grown from in the last five years from 20,000 people. So, but we're going to continue that trend of each individual. And our goal is to reduce that by 10%. 10% continues to reduce per capita, per use for individuals. We completed the install of 38,000 automated meters. The last push happened this year. Shane's been involved in that, and then Lindsay took over that in the last year. Both those guys were outstanding on getting this thing installed. So you remember the days when we would drive a truck around and have to touch read or have to actually read a meter? So those are all automated now. So that's saving the city dollars. We get better efficiency. We get better analytics on leak detection, things like that. So we have state-of-the-art system with our, our water system and our, and our automated meters. Value to customers, if you all listen, this is very important. So a lot of people, and we've talked about rate fatigue, and that is real. People are struggling. There's, they're struggling to get ends meet. And there's, and our rates are something that they need to pay for their, for the utility. I say that because we are offering a very, very good value to customers. So we have the lowest water rates in, in the region. We're matching Meridian for the lowest domestic water rate. I had someone call yesterday about our irrigation costs. And if you look at our irrigation costs, like right around $16 a month or something like that. Some of the places around the city, if you have, if you're using domestic water in Boise for their irrigation, they're paying $150 a month, which is our whole year's cost for irrigation. So if you look at the value, that we are the lowest in domestic for our rates, and we are one of the lowest for irrigation, and irrigation in, let's say, Meridian is privatized. And so they're, they might be paying a really low rate. But the day comes when they need to replace their pumps, which is every 10 to 12 years, they're going to have to pay a capital cost, which is not necessarily in their homeowners dues. So we are planning for the future. The rates are in a good place. But I want to also say, this is part of why we're vulnerable right now. It's leaving us open to staffing issues, and I want to cover some of those today. First is health and safety vulnerabilities. You saw some of the things that happened in California when there was fires. The utility was held responsible. Some of those people from the utility, I thought, were on the news because some of those hydrants didn't work. They, they had, what, three-quarters of the city was on fire? And they expected every fire hydrant to have water, which is beyond the capacity of any system, really, at that point. But it, it, it got us thinking. And we did a test, what if we had a catastrophic fire in the downtown? And we did, we ran scenarios for that. We went with the mayor internally. And we have a very good system. And over the years, people made really good decisions 20 years ago to increase our pumps, our wells, so that we would have capacity. What we do have right now, the vulnerability comes from the aging element of the infrastructure and also our staffing. So we're seeing turnover with our staff, especially trained turnover. And we need to keep good people. So I love our work environment, love the people we work for, work with. We want to keep them. And that's, I'll show you, that's a significant vulnerability. Also, we're deferring this line maintenance. We're in the midst of a, of a rates, it's called a cost of service study, a rate study. But one of the things we really need to look at is that deferred pipe replacement. We are needing to replace five miles a year, and we're not there yet. And that's that 10- to 15-year program we're in. So health and safety vulnerabilities. So we did a comparison on the number of staff we have compared to national organizations. We're at .26 employees per thousand. And the national, about 100, national, we're at .61 per 100,000. And this is interesting right here. We're about double the turnover rate of that 100, of those 100 utilities, which we absolutely can turn around, and we will. And we're starting to see that trend change. Our average tenure, we want, that we're, we're half of the average tenure experience because we've lost some people. And we want to, again, we want to retain those people. And this is, this is interesting in that we have the equal number of employees with Meridian. But Meridian has a similar size of domestic system that we have, but does not have any irrigation. So we oversee twice the infrastructure with about the same number of staff, which is good because our staff is working hard. But it also leads to those vulnerabilities we'll talk about.
I'm there, Clinton.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Jeff. I do have a question, maybe more for Doug than anyone. But because of the staff, I think the priority for, for sewer and for water is important now. And you just hit the nail on the head here. So two, two questions. One, how much overtime are you paying the employees to respond to after hours? The second question is, is can you use more funds from the enterprise funds, water and reuse water, to apply that to hire new employees? So the city is not really including, or increasing staff, but we need to include the staff.
Councilman Rodriguez, I'm going to cover that, but I want to answer your questions, too. We're going to, in more detail in the next couple of slides. But to give you an idea of overtime, we just, I just talked to, there's a couple of employees that over the last two weeks put in over 100 hours. I think someone was 125 hours in a two-week period. They are exhausted after the startup, so. Okay, startup, they have to really launch 93 stations, 600 miles of pipe every year. It's like starting up an older car that's been sitting in the garage all winter. So you... So you talk about that kind of expense and technical nature of the pumps and things. So anyway, back to your question, Councilman, so they are using overtime, and we can trim that overtime if we bring in these staff that we're proposing here. And yes, we have, we've laid out everything right now to work within our budget, but you'll see the vulnerabilities, we need to increase our budget progressively in order to hit some of the vulnerabilities on the staffing and also on the asset management and our pipe replacement.
Hello, Mayor. So I was thinking, and I haven't discussed it with anybody, it's just coming from me, is that, is there a direction that we can use to hire more staff and not from enterprise funds, so we have to use anybody else?
Yeah, I'll go through that right now, Councilman, and if I haven't answered it through this, I can return to that question, I think I can do that. So just a little bit about turnover, you don't talk, we don't talk about the cost of turnover a lot, but when we lose a staff, you have, it takes someone, Andy always says it takes someone three or four years, three to five years just to figure out the plant. And I'm, you know, I'm looking at nods in the head, and we have a great people working in the field right now, but some of them are newer, and they have to figure out ninety-three water stations on how they work, all the hydraulics, the pumps, type of pumps, electrical. So I think we keep in mind that number right there when we talk about staffing and keeping staff. It costs us money, and it's rarely in our, in any of our discussions that we're losing three hundred and seventy-eight thousand annually when we turn over staff, and we've done, you know, we are working for our, you know, the work environment to improve every year. We take, you know, after we survey, HR's been so helpful, and I think we're moving in totally in the right direction, but most of, about forty percent, fifty percent are leaving just because of the pay aspect, and we want to change that. Okay, they're also adding a lot of new infrastructure, you'll see here, and then that's that seventy-two million in infrastructure we're deferring, but you see seventeen point four new miles of pipe. So this is the budget proposal, and getting back to your comment, Council, this is, and we put a lot of thought to this, and we have been in a three-year plan. John took over a couple of years ago and just been instrumental in helping a great, already had a great staff. But we want to add eight full-time employees in FY twenty-six, we feel like this is absolutely essential, and I can give you a number of reasons why out in the field right now. Five-person utility construction team, this is a second construction team, right now we have one team that rotates to fix pipes and to repair, and they're spending three quarters of their time just on these emergency breaks. So we need redundancy in that group. And then we want to add three operations staff, this is, and the five people in the construction team are in iris section in water, but the three operators, and I'll go, there's backup for this, we can go into way more information, I put those slides on here, but startup, for instance, there is so much need for irrigation, people want that irrigation, but to start up this system, we have to send people out to these ninety-some stations, and right now, we're lean there. So, and also to correct the retention and recruitment and reduce turnover wages, we put in ninety-four thousand, which is a percentage of the total cost, and that's just a placeholder, but we do want to, we want to stop the turnover, which adds to about eight hundred and fourteen, five hundred thousand. We also put in operational costs, which we're going to absorb, and I'll tell you how we intend to pay for this. So if you look at the percentage of what we put towards personnel right now, it's lower than the national average, and it's lower than local, other locals. So we were like seventeen percent of our staff, percentage of our total overall budget goes to personnel, and there's a lot of more, twenty-two percent, twenty, twenty-two percent going to personnel. So we are already low, we spend more on other things, and we should be spending a little bit more on personnel to cover that. But water and irrigation growth, we grew, so we're putting that money, that growth money, towards this. And then our AMI, so we spent two point one million over the last several years putting in this automated meter, which came out of capital, but we're putting some of that money towards, the reallocation of that money towards the personnel this year, and that's at four hundred and thirty-four. And then there's some cost savings that we threw in there, and we continue to look for cost savings. So that's, we intend to pay for it through growth, through cost savings, and that four hundred and thirty-four thousand is through the two point one million that we were using to install those meters, we're going to reallocate some of that capital, and we're going to be a little bit more balanced with our personnel under our existing budget, and this is just within the budget we have. I'm going to, there's a lot of backup for the new construction team, Councilman Bills and others have talked about bringing some of that in-house so we can save money instead of outsourcing to contractors. That group is going to be another way that we can do that in-house. Right now, we're so busy, we're considering outsourcing some of the brakes we have, we can have, do that in-house without having to outsource it. We want to grow expertise, we want to double our emergency response, if there's an emergency, if there's a catastrophic emergency, we want to have more in place so we can respond to those. And right now, we, the crew's response to two-thirds of it is just an emergency response, we want to get to some of the capital. Operational staff, we have twenty-nine facilities per operator right now, and the national average is like fifteen, so we're double the facilities. I think they were putting in ninety-plus miles a day in their trucks, operators were, I mean, and they're doing it, right? And they're out there struggling and trying to meet the requirements, but they need resources to back up. So that's the reinforcement for the three operations positions. Notice the thirteen hundred and sixty-eight samples per year, we have clean water every year. Shane is like driven, like you were talking to him about sampling and maintaining clean water, that, we have, we have passed all of our tests, we are absolutely driven for the safety of the community and the water, so this would also enable us to do a better job at that. This is our five-year budget outlook for both domestic and water, I'm obviously not going to get into this in detail, I'm saying we're working within this budget, and then come, when we're done with the next cost of service study, we'll be presenting that with our rates and where we should be for the next five years. This is our work chart, and I'll take any questions and stop right now, that's the water and irrigation division portion.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Can you add how many line breaks you've had this year? There was, you told me the number the other day, and I was amazed by it.
Yeah, so we had a hundred and sixty-seven line breaks, and so we figured in the working days, that's quite a bit, they're spending sixty-six point seven percent of their time on emergency breaks, that crew. And so that, while they're doing that, those, in the middle of the night, all hours a night, they're not being able to put in new hydrants and new valves, and they're not to be able to do all this stuff because we're pulling all this resources. So that's the aging infrastructure thing we're going to cover, that we really need to start, getting up to speed on replacing some of the older pipes, and I think we're in a good place to do that in the next ten years.
So just a quick comment in following up to your comment, Jeff, on our aging infrastructure. Just a reminder, Nampa was the second largest city in the state of Idaho, we had a very large footprint, even though our population wasn't as large, so we have a very large infrastructure that is aging, and a little different than Meridian, because Meridian was a little small town, and then they've grown out, so they have all new infrastructure. We were a larger town and a larger footprint, so we definitely have the pipes, and that's why we have the breakages that we do. But in, as a follow-up to Victor, to your question, all of the funds, all of the employees are funded through the enterprise fund, so we do not put JNGOV dollars into the enterprise funds, whether it be water, wastewater streets, and so it's fully funded out of there. And hopefully, by not outsourcing some of the construction, we will actually save money. So each time when we're looking in all these budgets at hiring employees, there's an ROI that we look at, and what is that return on investment, and is there actually a cost savings to our citizens, and that's the whole goal here, is to bring it in-house, not to have to outsource it, have them available all the time to be able to quickly respond. So hopefully that answers that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Just to follow up to that statement, Mayor, do you have a projected timeline, Jeff, of how soon we could have that return on investment from not outsourcing those projects and keeping them in-house?
I think we, Mayor and Counselor, we, once we hire those staff, you will see us improve customer service, and we will immediately start chipping into our asset management and our deferred maintenance. It's not a lot right away, but it's the right step. Eventually, that crew can grow and do more and more on the capital side, we want to start with hydrants and valves replacement. The mainline stuff, we're still going to outsource, and the capitals are huge projects right now. So I think you'll see a dent in that right away, once we hire the staff come in October of FY twenty-six.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Again, if there's any other questions after this, Counselors, I want to thank you for coming this morning, and we'll certainly ask, and there's an abundance of information in this slide deck. So I'm going to shift to our water renewal division. Again, Andy Zimmerman's our superintendent, and man, does a great job, the whole team is amazing, super, I just say, fun to work with, they're driven, just, I can't say enough about our staff. So again, we, this is a wastewater utility, we don't call it that anymore because we have recycled water, you should see the things we're doing, same exciting things we see on the water side into the water renewal side. So this is, again, the contents we're going to cover today, that's a picture of our water renewal staff. Forty-five employees, two billion in infrastructure, fifty million dollar budget, and there's a lot of revenues and grants and other things in there. Serving a hundred and nineteen thousand citizens in Nampa, and commercial, industrial, and we serve some big industrial providers, which is unique in the area. So we, I think, we support the economic development of Nampa. It's the largest water recycling facility in the Northwest, we went to conferences where they were running recycled water to like a park and a one business, and they're, you know, bigger cities, and I'm thinking, man, we're recycling eleven million gallons a day in the summer, so it's impressive on a regional scale, we're really representing. So I know a lot of people have spent a decade plus on this, on all these improvements, and so it's been a team effort, but it's very exciting. So what is our mission? We want to provide safe, efficient, affordable water renewal service, and again, exceptional customer service, which I think we are doing. Is our plan effective? Yes. Water and irrigation, the rate structure is low, which leads to vulnerabilities. Water renewal rate structure, we have paid the price over the last seven years, and it's been a heavy lift for individuals in our community to pay for these required improvements from EPA and things like that, to build the plant. So we're in a good position right now in water renewal rates, and you don't often hear that in a city, you know, we're always chasing it, but we have built this program and we're there, and so that gives us an opportunity to focus on water and irrigation with our rates in the future, in the next five to ten years. Citywide goals and tracking, they're really, out of these goals that we are working on changing is at the plant, we want to get to more of a proactive response to our maintenance, and Andy's been doing that. Right now, we're thirty-two percent preventative and sixty-eight percent corrective, we want to kind of flip-flop that in coming years, but we're on our way to doing that, and part of the things we're adding as part of this proposal is to do that. Okay, here's what the accomplishments of the water renewal department, they managed two billion, forty thousand samples, have you ever been down to the lab? We're a great group of people down there, but they're constantly testing our water, and in stormwater side, they're testing too, Greg's group, they maintain permits, we had no violations. So they maintain eighteen hundred major equipment units, I threw in a picture of the boiler room, can you see the middle picture? I always say it's like throwing spaghetti up against a wall, and that's the way the pipes look to me. I don't know how they even track where they go. There are so many pipes in that room to maintain, so many pieces of equipment down at the plant, it's very technical and hard to maintain. Picture on the right is they installed one of our primary effluent pumps in-house, saved us a hundred and fifty thousand. They couldn't fit that tall pump in their work shed, into the maintenance sheds, they had to tip it on its side, so they figured it out. There's, again, just like water, there's four hundred and fifty-eight miles of pipe, which gets us into Mexico now with our pipe, by the way, so we're chasing it. How long does it take you to go from Boise to the southern border of the United States and just keep going? That's where the water, that's where the sewer lines take us into. Then we have thirteen list stations, eleven thousand manholes, externally, that's Izzy Panion's group, he does a fantastic job, and they're super innovative there, and we'll talk about an exciting thing they're bringing in-house now, Andy's group. Replacing inefficient and deteriorated headworks, if you go down there, we have this brand-new, we have this brand-new plant really, but the headworks is like this old, it's one of the most important pieces of equipment, it takes the brunt of all the waste, as it's entering into the plant, think about how ugly that can get, but that is being replaced right now. We have a water renewal committee, I see Larry here today representing, Councilman Haverfield, Councilman Reynolds are on that water renewal committee, have been instrumental in getting that, and a number of people in the community over the years. So we had cost savings on our expansion, and we had capital come in as part of that program, ten to fifteen million. So what we did is we were able to get the headworks launched way early, and to get that problem, it had health and safety with the gases out there, it's old, at one point, we were wondering, it's limping along right now just with the screw pumps that are out there, but this is a huge lift, and it was awesome that we can get that done in the next, so we'll be completing that in the next year and a half. Resource recovery, that's what they are calling plants nationwide, a resource recovery plant, and we are starting, Tom's been doing, how can we take the resources of the plant and recycle, you know, not just waste those things, not just take them to a landfill. So what we do is, we took ten thousand tons of biosolids, we have a relationship with Timber Creek Recycling, we recycled those, and they turn it into compost, and they go ahead and sell that. Our biogas powers our boilers, and we're looking for other ways for our biogas, other methods to use as far as, in vehicles, and ways to clean the gas and get it into the natural gas pipeline. We will recycle one point seven billion gallons of water annually for irrigation, which is about fifteen percent of our overall irrigation is coming from our wastewater plant. So all the waste from the houses, we're cleaning it, we're putting it back into the irrigation system. How many cities can say that we're putting fifteen percent of our water back and reusing it into our irrigation system?
Jeff, can I?
Yes, sir.
Listen for a second there. So thanks, Council, for supporting our gas recovery to the pipeline project the other day, but we didn't get a chance to really explain, that's actually going to make you money, and we've run the numbers, about two million a year. And so some of these other resources that we're talking about with our water and our biosolids, we're looking at ways we can generate revenue off of those as well. So this is a super exciting opportunity right here for us, and one of our goals, and I appreciate Mayor bringing this up, is we are concerned about power outages, so we're looking for a way for our wastewater plant, all of our public work facilities, our police station, all of our list stations, the wells will be completely off the grid, and we think we can do that with some of these new technologies out there, and it will all come from this plant, which is pretty exciting stuff, so, sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, no, thanks, Tom. Yeah, Tom's been instrumental in looking at out-of-the-box ways we can do that, I'm super excited at the direction. So we are one year ahead of schedule, we finished this project one year ahead of schedule, the expansion at the plant, it was within the budget that we had, it was an alternative delivery method, progressive design build, and then Shannon's group in the middle of this, which got no press, but what we did is have all this groundwater coming into our plant, and they were making us run that groundwater, they being just our permit requirements, run that groundwater and treat it through the plant. So it was taking clean groundwater, and we were running it through all the processes, and it was a million gallons a day, and that's a tenth of the total process. Shannon worked with our IDEQ, and we requested it, and they said you can discharge that directly outside of the plant and into Indian Creek, and it's clean water, it's, we've tested, it's clean. That, could you imagine what it would cost if I stood up here today and said, we want to add ten percent of capacity to our plant? And how mu, you know, tens, twenty, thirty million just to do that, but we freed up ten percent of our plant's capacity by being able to do that. So I want to highlight that, so much money was saved just in that part of the project. We won the Idaho Project of the Year Association of Idaho Cities, American Public Works Association Project of the Year, and then we had the gov, the governor out, which was exciting. That's Lamar, who's our construction manager for Jacobs, he has this one picture where he's peering off into the distance, standing next to the governor, that's kind of our keynote picture for us. Okay, and then we're getting into vulnerabilities, I say they're different than water because we're in a better place on the rate structure, so. But high turnover, we want to deal with the same thing, and train staff, want to keep good staff, and we want to keep up with critical asset management, but we have a great proposal for doing that with water renewal. but we have a great proposal for doing that with water renewal. Again, we spent a lot on turnover, and they've had more turnover in, but again, I feel like that trend's changing, HR's been instrumental, and I know, working with Mayor's Office, everybody's working hard on this one, but we have had a cost from the turnover, and I also want to highlight again, six hundred and fifty thousand is, is reasonable, on having to replace people and train them again, and send them to conferences and figure out the system. This is our budget proposal, we have thirty-seven percent less employees than utilities surveyed around the country, so again, we have a lean staff, and we're doing a lot with that staff, it's a testament to Andy's crew and, and the team. To meet these goals, we want to add one pipelining construction crew supervisor, we want to, and I'll tell you about what it means to re-line the pipes, it's our, it's our asset management program for the pipe, we want to bring that in-house. And this is one, you know, we do our chip seal in-house on the transportation side, and they do the best job in the valley. We want to bring this, and it's consistent, it's something we definitely can oversee, and we'll be excellent at it, and it'll save the city, we can do twice as much for the same cost. We want to add an instrumentation tech now, we kind of, we kind of waited to hire positions for the plant until we got the feel of it, now it's been up and running for about three-quarters of a year, Andy knew, so these last two are to take care of the plant and an instrumentation tech. So with the three new positions, this is the cost for each position, and we put in some for retention and recruitment to cut into that six, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss a year from turnover, and it's at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars a proposal for that, and then the funding for the proposal is strictly from growth, just from our city is growing, and we're getting rates in. So we're putting all of our growth money back into the staffing, and, and it's gonna pay off, now let me show you how it's gonna pay off. So we're gonna build what's, the CIPP is Cure and Place Pipe, this is a very slick system for a city, unlike water, sewer goes from manhole to manhole, and then it has laterals that go to houses, it's not under pressure, so I wish we could find a system like this in water, but a little bit more complicated. So we want to complete three to five miles, we want to grow to this, of pipelining per year, and again, we're saving about sixty percent, we'll do it at sixty percent less the cost, and we're currently outsourcing one to two miles per year for this. The goal is to do twenty-four manholes too, where we can coat manholes and seal them in-house, do that in-house. And I totally trust our crew, Izzy's crew, comparing to anyone, I would rather have them doing this, but we have to hire the crew to do it, they don't have the capacity to do this whole new crew. This is, this is what it looks like to line the pipes, so they push a sock through this pipeline, the old cracked pipeline that needs to be replaced, they push it in a manhole, comes out the other manhole, they steam, cure it, it, it puts a structural liner into, into the, into the pipe, they send a cutter through after that, it cuts in the laterals, and bam, they're done, no excavation, no nothing. We do this every year, we've been doing it for years, but this is definitely something, Andy went to a conference with Izzy, they strategized it out, did a cost benefit analysis, and so what we want to do this year is start with one person to start to build the crew, and we want to build, and we want to buy the equipment. The instrumentation tech, not gonna go through this, but there is, we added, out of a thousand, we have a thousand large pieces of equipment out at the plant, we added two hundred and twenty-three with the expansion of the plant. So this is a, a person that can go around and monitor meters, phosphorus analyzers, turbidity, all this stuff, that, that's what that position is for. And then the last one is to take care of the plant, oversee plant safety, our UV light have to be replaced, and these are specific just to the new plant, that's the third position. This is what we track, and I, Shannon and I and finance track this very closely on our budget and our fund balance, and again, because of the work that's been done over the last decade, I just want to thank everyone out there that was in the original N-WAG, the Nampa Wastewater Group, that started the whole expansion of the plant, a lot of public input to that, a lot of city council input along the way. So anyway, this is our five-year budget, and we track it closely, and I can honestly say we're in a good place moving forward. We have enough built into the program, we can do our capital program, and again, I just want to highlight, this is a good shape, water and irrigation are the one we want to focus on more so in the next five years. This is the org chart, and I'll stand for any questions to the council, Mayor Council, with our Water Renewal Division.
Thank you, Jeff, that was excellent. So you have two more divisions to do in about thirty minutes, is that right? Are we doing okay on time?
Yeah, perfect, I'm ahead of schedules.
Are you? Okay, good. Council, do we have any questions?
Mayor, I have a question. Jeff, you mentioned that we were going, if we were to move that in-house, we were gonna need additional equipment that we don't have, what is the rough estimate of what that would be?
Yeah, so what we, councillor, Mayor Councillor, we, we needed one point five million in equipment, that is the steam truck, that's the whole CIPP program, ancillary equipment as far as that. So what we did is, this year, we're not doing any of, we're not outsourcing the capital, we're outsourcing some of it, but not as much. So we usually pay a company to do the lining, we're backing off on what we pay this year, we're paying for the equipment in the one point five million. So you'll see that coming out of a one, one time out of capital to get this thing ramped up, and then as we wean off going outsourcing in the years to come, we're gonna build a team, and then we're gonna start to chip away at doing it in-house from then on. And this year, it's built in to our, it's not, we're not calling it capital, but that's where it's coming from this year, the one point five million for the equipment, and then the staffing is coming from just growth, which I identified here. And that's just one staff now, we anticipate we're gonna need probably three next year when the program's up and running.
When you say this year, you mean FY twenty-six?
FY twenty-six, thank you, yes.
Yep, thanks.
Questions? Okay. Thank you. I will pause, and I would say this at the end, but for our city council members and any that have questions, we will be scheduling, after you guys all get your budget book, we will be scheduling times for council to meet with staff, to ask whatever questions that you have, so, and that's something we do every year, so, thank you for being available for that.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. All right, I'm gonna move on to Environmental Resources, it's the third group, I've also, we've added capital utility projects to this, so I'm gonna cover just these, and, and really the, most of the share of the budgetary issues and requests are in the first two, so this is more information. So again, this water, Environmental Resources, they cover water resources, capital delivery. Shannon's group, there was a plan in place in nineteen that we were paying for outsourcing consulting, over a million dollars a year, and you add that to Greg's group outsourcing for stormwater, and so between our plant crew and stormwater, we were pushing a million, two, a million every year, and you can imagine what that is per month paying to manage a program. So the plan was, we were gonna, and again, this decade-plus good planning, we, we planned on bringing an in-house program management team, and we built that team, and we were way ahead of schedule by half, I would, I would say the first year of, of Group F when we were constructing, we were using less and less consulting, and then we hired great people, I don't see, is Logan here today? Okay, Logan, we hired, Logan is our project manager, fantastic, he's now our program capital manager. Anyway, we built that team, and we, we always say we're saving half a million a year at least. I mean, if we actually, we, we have actually penciled it, he's thrown out a million dollars a year, so we were saving a lot of money by bringing a good, great team in-house, and that's the people we want to keep, and we've been able to keep them now for the past few years, and we're building that program. So stormwater, we, stormwater is a huge system that has a hundred and fifty miles of pipe, and we're getting into that, but there's a lot of permitting, and there's a lot of maintenance that goes into that. This group also covers erosion and sediment control, protecting our stormwater system, working with developers, any environmental permits, we're bringing in-house now, so Shannon's group has taken over that, we don't outsource those, and then any of the plant engineering goes through and supports Andy if they need it. And then our, our mission statement is we want to safeguard the quality and availability of water resources, we're a leader in the area in environmental and water quality, and we want to continue to do that. This group is like our environmental engineering section, they support all the environmental and engineering and project management initiatives. I, I feel like we're doing, the plan is effective, we brought in a lot of, we've saved the city millions over a five-year period, just since our Group F project started. We are in compliance with all of our permit, I feel like the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality uses us as an example, they asked me to come and speak at their yearly meeting, and it's just really an honor to work with this group, they've set up a good program, and they're working the details on the stormwater side, so appreciate them. Accomplishments, they manage over two hundred million in capital water renewal projects, and this is a couple of them, they're doing a digester clarifier coating project, this is a picture of the boiler, biogas, and the new headworks, the water, they're managing the new water tank, that's, they're gonna be part of the CIPP, but they're managing the CIPP now, the, the pipelining, and then they're also helping to oversee the Cartra Wetlands also, so John doesn't get credit for that, John's a project manager, so that's a buy committee on that one, so, and you deserve credit for that, he's been in a lot of work on the Cartra Wetlands, it's a very exciting project, it's downstream from our wastewater treatment plant, we purchased acreage in there that was, we didn't purchase it, it's ITD, Idaho Transportation Department owns it, we turned it into a constructed wetland, which is very, it's a fascinating project, getting a lot of interest, and if you want to know more of that, we can talk later. But we completed all permitting, programming management in-house, just this year, we figured just in that group, three hundred and forty-five thousand they saved, that's, that doesn't include anything with the plant, just for, for stormwater, there's forty-six hundred storm drains, a hundred and eighty miles of storm pipe, water quality monitoring. I want, I think there's not a funding mechanism for, for stormwater now, it was established ten years ago, and it was, we, we don't do it anymore, so all of this funding comes out of some of its wastewater, but streets covers a lot of the street portion of it, which picks up some of these catch basins and pipes when we do street projects, so funding there is a challenge. Accomplishments, it's the education in Nampa School Districts, Public Works Weeks, Kelly's been really helping on this one, and the staff does a good job, Water Ed Day, this is a lot of good stuff going on to educate our public, we went to this cleanup day this year, so many people showed up, it was really fun, and I, I think I, I love working with the young people, because they're super interested in, in clean water, in protecting the water, and they love this stuff, and I think there's a whole group of people that want to get into this industry, and it's cool to get the word out about that. We don't have a new, no new positions requested this year, we have some adjustments we want to make to our positions in-house to keep people and to reduce turnover. This is our organization chart for environmental resources, and we have a whole group on here that's not represented, because it's a newer group that just came up, but Darius Bruce, I mentioned him and his team of project managers, they are now part of our team, which gives us good connection from our project management, our engineering, to our, our operations divisions, which I'm excited about. And with that, I, that's, that's our FY twenty-six proposal, a budget proposal and summary for water resources. So I just thank you for your time, and you know, I'll stand for any questions you might have, Mayor or City Council.
Do we have any questions from City Council at this time? Go for it, do you have?
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah.
Just with the political climate as it is, are you aware of any, because we rely so heavily on grants for a lot of these really big projects, are you aware of any that could possibly not come through that we're relying on, that would change your budget for FY twenty-six?
No, we're not relying, Mayor Councillor, we're not relying on any for our budget, for our enterprise budget, but there are projects that we are building that have federal grants in them, and that would be the Cartra Wetlands, we're presenting some grants, but we have not heard yet that they have been impacted. So our Water Smart, part of our wastewater expansion was covered through Water Smart, we have not heard that they are impacting. I would say there's a few key projects, and maybe Tom wants to respond to that, that if the money wasn't coming through, we would have to delay, or we'd have to figure that out, but as far as operationally, through our enterprise, we're solid without that.
Excuse me, so the feds are delaying some decisions, but we're, should be hearing in July on, on those, they should be freed up and we'll have some answers, but I, I do want to also say that the state has been, and the legislative have been very generous for water resource projects, they put another forty million in for aquifer recharge projects across the state this year, so we're excited about that, plus they already have a pretty steady flow of money coming in on sustainability and regional water projects, so we've got other sources besides that.
Mayor, please, just one more question. So Jeff, altogether from reuse, irrigation, domestic, how many employees are you asking for, and what is the cost?
We're asking for eleven positions total, in fi, eight in water and irrigation, and three in water renewal.
Okay. And Mayor, please, those are all enterprise funds, so.
Oh, and the last set of employees are from, can you turn me down just a bit, just so loud? The last set of employees are being funded through growth, just growth.
Okay.
Which is really beneficial. The construction employees that you're gonna be asking for, whether it be now and in the coming, next year, will be offset by the cost of outsourcing.
Okay.
So we won't be incurring the cost of outsourcing, we'll be, so it should, it should be a savings is the goal, is that it's actually a savings. I think the one thing that we talk about a lot is the fee fatigue that Jeff referenced. We're trying to, we've got to get the work done, we've got to be expanding the number of replacements that we're doing on our lines that are aging, while at the same time not increasing a fee structure, and so we're really mindful of that, and trying to figure out, how do we get that all done? It's a little tricky sometimes, but I really appreciate the mindset that we have to figure out, how do we get the work done without increasing rates? And, yeah, do you have, go ahead.
No, that's fine, and, and that's what I wanted to find out, because I know it's gonna be an even keel, the way we're funding this, so I like that. One thing is, how much per year overtime are you paying?
We can get you that number, councillor.
Rough estimate.
Yeah.
I mean, are, are we able to hire more employees to save that from the overtime costs?
Go ahead.
Mayor Councillor, my understanding is we're paying about fifty-eight thousand dollars a year in overtime.
Oh, really?
Which isn't much when you look at your budget.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
No, wow. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I just want to say, I tell you what, the work, thank you guys for your work, to the entire teams here, thank you guys, you're amazing. Our city doesn't run without this work, it's, everything we do as a city is important, but our city is at a standstill, if you don't have water and you don't have your wastewater, I'll just use it that way, and the storm drains, right, and the environmental compliance, all the work that gets done here is at the core of this city, and it's very important, it is what we do as a city, is make sure that we provide these services, but I'm so impressed, because we have an amazing team that's working really hard, and we don't, we just don't function without you. But beyond that, I love the innovation, thank you, we talk about it all the time, but you guys are actually doing it. It's fun to see the innovative thoughts, and how do we do things differently, and I, I feel like we in the city of Nampa, it is you, the work that is being done here is some of the best in the Northwest, probably some of the best in the nation. I am extremely proud of the work that you guys are doing, you are to be applauded, and I appreciate it, and we do need to continue to work on our wage structure, which we're trying to do, because retaining employees, in the Treasure Valley, and you guys probably know this, the municipalities keep stealing from one another, right, and then you've got the private sector for certain positions, but it makes it really hard, because with, if one of our sister cities right next door to us pays two dollars more an hour, you're gonna have an employee go to that city, and so we need to make sure that our wages are competitive, and we've done a lot of work on that just in the last year and two years, we're gonna continue to have to do that, because we're all competing for the same workers, so.
Mayor, I would add, we wouldn't be able to do the things we did unless we had good leadership in the City Council and the Mayor's Office, Tom, I mean, we just, the ability to, for staff to come and say, oh, this is not working, let's try this, let's go this direction, is uncommon. And I can say some of us have been doing this a long time, it's uncommon to be able to do that, there's risks associated with that, I think we were, we measure the risks, you know, with that, but the benefits are huge to the community and cost savings and things like that. So I also want to mention one thing, I didn't say that with, the value, and this is some of the questions the City Council gets asked, value on sewer rates, wastewater rates, so I said that our water rates were the lowest in the, in the region, our So I said that our water rates were the lowest in the region, our irrigation rates are comparable or on the lower end. Wastewater, we spent 240 million over a 10-year period. We had seven rate increases over that period. And if you compare us to the 21 cities, utilities in the region, we're below the median. So we are, I think we're ninth among that group, but I want to say, some of those people, some of those utilities have not done the required work, that we got the lion's share of the most expensive work in the history of our city done, and our rates are still below the median for the region. So when you talk about, people ask value for what we're getting in a community, I think that's part of why we're probably winning awards, you know, for the wallet heaven and things like that. So it puts us in some vulnerabilities as far as paying for some of the water things, and that, we've talked about that, but wastewater, we're in a very good position, and you'd expect us to be at the top of the list, right, after getting done with a program like that, and we're still not. So that was impressive, I didn't mention that.
I'd also like to say, I think Michael Fuser, are you still here? Yep. Michael was at the beginning of this, right? Michael, thank you.
Foundation. Thanks, Michael.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your work and your vision at the beginning. Good team carrying on. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Mayor, City Council?
We are done early. I think, yeah. Good job, Jeff. You set the bar. Good job. Yes. Okay, with that, I don't believe we have any other work today. I think we're done 15 minutes early.
Wow.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It's amazing.
Thank you. So, meeting adjourned.
Have a good day.
Thank you, guys.